The Village of Bartlett Board Meeting for July 7th, 2015. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's absent. Camerer?
Here.
Carbonero?
Here.
Danny?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. We requested Mr. Murgish Gajar for the invocation this evening, so...
Village President Polis, Board of Trustees of Village of Bartlett, respected residents, Namaste and Jai Swaminarayan. I am Ruges Gajar, priest from BAPS Swaminarayam Mandir, Bartlett. We are honored by your invitation to offer prayers. We will recite a short prayer. The prayer is from Vedas. It is more than 10,000 years old prayer. It is recited at all Hindu spiritual events. Prayers are for peace. It is called Shanti Pat. I will recite it in Sanskrit and then give a translation in English. Sri Swaminarayan Bhagwani Jai. Harihi Om Mahdyohu Shanti Ranta Rikshagun Shantihi Prathavi Shanti Rapa Shanti Roche Dayah Vanaspataya Shantihe Vishve Deva Shanti Brahma Shantihi Sarbagu Shantihi Shanti Reva Shantihi Shama Shanti Redhi Jato Yata Satamih Seta Tonno Abhayang Guru Sannaha Guru Prajaabhyo Bayannaha Pasubhyaha Vishwani Deva Savitar Duritha Nipara Suva Jat Badran Tanna Asuva Om Shantihi Shantihi May there be peace in heaven, peace in the atmosphere, peace across the waters, may there be peace on earth, may peace flow from herbs, plants, and trees, may all the celestial beings pervade peace, may peace pervade all quarters, may that peace come to me too, may there be peace, peace, and peace. Welcome, Jai Swaminarayan.
Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item we have, our agenda here is our consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk on our agenda will be passed in one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on such items. At this point, is there anything that anyone would like added to the consent agenda?
Mr. President, I'd like to remove item D1, the executive session minutes, from the consent agenda.
Okay.
Which item was that?
D1.
D1? Thank you.
Anything else? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to amend the consent agenda to include the minutes from the board and committee minutes of June 16th, 2015, the July 7th, 2015 bills list...
So moved.
The National Night Out Twilight Skate Park Bash Tailgate Party, National Night Out Picnic and Park Amplifier Permit Request, National Night Out Special Day Display Request... How do you get all those National Night Outs in there? Kiss Amplifier Permit Request, and Bar Amplifier Permit Request, and removing the executive session minutes.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by trustee Camerer, seconded by trustee Eve Carbonero. Danny? Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's?
Oh, yes.
Camerer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
My motion carries. Next item we have on our list here today is the treasures report. Mr. Martin Noix.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start out with the sales tax report for the fiscal year ended April 30th, 2015. Total fiscal year-to-date revenue, $2,116,036, and it represents a 2.26% increase over the same time period last year. Moving on to the motor fuel tax allotment report, as we start our new fiscal year through May 2015, total revenue of $89,988. This allotment is down 15.63% from the same time period last year.
Jeff, do we know, have any idea why it's down 15%? For a motor, I guess it just depends on how many people are buying gas, I guess, right?
Yeah, that's part of it. It could be a late disbursement from one of the vendors, and it usually makes up from the next month, so...
All right, thank you.
Jeff, any other things that you're concerned with as far as, I'm sure there's a lot of things, but anything particular you'd like to mention as far as downstate issues that are coming up or things that you could predict?
Well, we are keeping a real close eye on what's going on with Springfield. Obviously, I think everybody knows that the budget, state budget hasn't passed, we're not so sure what that effect will be for us if our state income tax will be late. I would assume that it will be, starting in July. There's other bills, such as a property tax freeze for the next two years, but as far as our local economy goes, we're really seeing some positive results as we budgeted for this year. Real estate transfer tax, I think, is doing really well, and the building department is extremely busy, and we're generating a lot of permits, so a lot of good things financially going on locally, and as we speak, our auditors are going to be in next week, and we don't expect anything out of the ordinary. We should have good results to bring back in October when we complete that report.
Thank you. Moving right along, next item we have is the president's report. We have no report this evening, and next we have question and answer time. Anybody have any questions for the staff at this point? Hearing none, we'll move on to the town hall portion of the meeting. At this point...
I just wanted to commend the police department and the public works department on their just totally unusual and always unexpected excellence in their assistance for the Fourth of July. We have a lot of people that come to the Fourth of July celebration, excuse me, from other towns, and the reason they come to our town is because there's an obvious police presence, it's clean, and they can see our sense of cooperation between all the people and the park district in putting on a good fest. It's a place to make memories, and that's what we've always wanted it to be. In particular, I wanted to mention Jeff Prochalis, is he here? I don't know, but I was standing in a little group, and there were two residents that were talking about how we get people, excuse me, out after fireworks. And I have to tell you that, now, these two people were, oh, maybe a little bit cantankerous, and, he's a sergeant, right? Sergeant Prochalis carefully and simply explained the reason that we do what we do, to get people out of the parking lot and away from the fest after the fireworks. And I wish you would commend him for being so, he just explained it to the T where the residents had no other questions, said, "Well, that sounds like a good deal," and walked away. So I think that says a lot for your staff. And thank you again for all your cooperation with the Fourth of July fest.
Well done. Anything else? Thanks, Tim. Hearing none, we'll go on to the town hall portion of the meeting. At this point in the meeting, anybody that would like to address the board, please step up to the podium. Please keep your comments to three minutes and state your name and address, right over here.
Hello, my name is Gary Dano. I am the owner of the property of 113 Railroad Avenue, and the former owner of the 121 Railroad Avenue property, which many of us know as Lucky Jack location. During a situation of unfortunate events that took place that led to the property on the corner to fall in disrepair, ownership was passed on ultimately to a particular gentleman that I introduced to the bank by the name of Mike Olson. He's the current owner of the Lucky Jack property. I am a real estate broker, I put deals together, I have a love for historical buildings. I was able to convince Mr. Olson that this historical district of Bartlett was certainly worth putting his money into and investing in. He agreed with me. He was a little hesitant due to the condition of the real estate property, and one of the reasons why he ultimately did go through was because of this possibility of having a TIF in the Village of Bartlett. And I appealed to him, he went along with it, he realized that it was not a sure thing, was somewhat of a gamble, but he did realize that if the TIF did come through, the building would come back its former days of luster. He went through it, he has his numbers to rehab it, and I fear that, I've owned that building since 1985, up until a couple of years ago, that if the TIF is not voted on, that I fear, that one of my greatest fears of that building being knocked down is a reality. As much as the fact that Mr. Olson agrees with my dream and my vision for that corner, the reality is that if there's not some TIF funding available, one of our historical buildings in the Village of Bartlett just may come down and be a parking lot. And I just wanted to appeal to the board tonight and ask you to really consider voting yes for the TIF. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dano.
Good evening. My name is David Berry. I'm at 900 Poplar Lane, and I'm the new president of the Bartlett Public Library Board. And we've submitted our resolution against the TIF, but I'm not to talk about the resolution, that particular resolution. I just received the word from the state library director that we probably won't receive source of funds this year because of what's going on in Springfield. And those funds were usually used to fund our databases. We purchase databases and subscriptions to databases for our patrons if they want to do genealogical research or medical research, et cetera, et cetera, use those funds. They're not going to be here this year. So I'm asking you again not to vote for the TIF, because we need that money. We need all possible money this year and years going forward. Thank you very much, and thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Mr. Berry.
Good evening. Mike Warden, 431 South Main Street, Bartlett. I would like to encourage you to vote for the TIF. Bartlett is a beautiful, safe community. It's a community of which we can all be proud. As I had said once before, in the past, it was kind of dingy, and people didn't keep things up real nice, and we've had a lot of positive things that have happened. You have a wonderful staff that has done a lot of research. We have one of the finest police departments in the world. You are trustees of a beautiful downtown Bartlett. We are suffering a little bit financially, but look at the streetscape program that we were able to accomplish because of the TIF before. We have nice paver bricks in the sidewalks, we have trees, we have lighting, we have things that we wouldn't have had without it, and there are a lot of businesses that are suffering and need the help. Funding is tight, we know that. I'm a state employee. I mean, being paid is a little bit of a nerve-wracking thing right now, especially in light of a court decision today. But I would just encourage you to remember that you are trustees for the Village of Bartlett, not of other entities, and we need to get the money, we need to have a plan, we need to have some vision, we need to be able to do things with the money and not just have things concealed where we don't know what's happening. But let's have the Village of Bartlett rise again to more beauty, more glory, and remember who we are. We're proud citizens of the Village of Bartlett. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice T-shirt.
It just went on sale at the...
By the way, those are on sale, aren't they?
They debuted those at the Arts Festival. I believe I might have been one of the first purchasers. Is anybody else interested in addressing the board at this time? Hearing none, we'll move along to the standing committee reports. First standing committee reporter this evening is under Planning and Zoning Committee, Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have three items on planning and zoning this evening. They are all... Oh, yeah, yeah. Is it? Oh, absolutely. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm Mary Ann Hoss, the executive director with the Chesterbrook Academy Preschool, and this is Ashley Earn, the principal of the preschool. We just want to say that we oppose the development of Bannerman's. Chesterbrook's philosophy is to provide a safe and nurturing environment for all of our students and their families. Our hours of operation are until 6:30 PM. I do know that they're interested in putting in a beer garden and a volleyball court that would be right next door to one of our playgrounds. This is definitely a safety concern for us and for our families. We all know that consumption of alcohol and the behavior that can go with it does not mix with safety of children. We appeal to the board to vote no to the development for the proposal of Bannerman's Sports Bar.
And we also have a petition of parents and local residents that are against this. If I can give that to you guys?
Absolutely.
Sir, clerk.
Thank you, sorry for the...
Thank you, that's okay.
And I'll pass this to the clerk and ask her to enter it into the minutes.
Evening. Rob Carney, 29W 470 Sunset Ridge, here in Bartlett. I'm also opposing the development of Bannerman's at that location. My children attend Chesterbrook. It is within close proximity of where the children play during the day. They have afternoon recess at times when patrons would be there outside playing, drinking. We all know what happens when we drink and play sports outside. There's loudness, there's rowdiness, there's drunkenness, there's people leaving the establishment, 6:30 when parents are there to pick up their children. It's going to cause a lot of traffic and unsafe conditions for the children as they're leaving what is a small parking lot now. I don't know the exact size of Bannerman's proposal just yet, however, just want to get it on record that there are several families of that Chesterbrook that are opposing this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pat Kelly, 1009 Bentley Lane in Bartlett. I also oppose Bannerman's concept. I didn't know if you wanted to wait till committee on the hall, but if you wanted for town hall. This village board was always very careful even about giving licenses for the video gambling and places that were much smaller because families lived upstairs or in the area. Bannerman's is proposing a 7,800 square foot sports bar with an outdoor beer garden and two outdoor volleyball places. They literally will abut to the playground area of the daycare center. There's basically a driveway only that separates it from town homes behind it. The people that are in those town homes, their property values are going to definitely be impacted. From the information in your packet, I believe the last volleyball game was going to be 11:00 PM on a weekday and later on weekends. If you were backing to that, I think that would be just awful. You'd never be able to have your windows open and whatnot. I certainly hope that, I'm all for promoting business in our community. I think there's other places that Bannerman's can put the facility they want. I think it's great to have things, but I think to put it exactly adjacent to a daycare center is totally against, I can't imagine a less appropriate neighbor for a daycare center. I just think that's between the proximity to the residences and adjacent to a daycare, I think, is inappropriate, and I certainly hope that you don't approve that concept or liquor license that close to a daycare.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
Hi there, my name is Heather Matthews, and I live at 817 Grant Street here in Bartlett. I am also a Chesterbrook parent, and I also have concerns about the Bannerman's proposal. One of my main concerns is the parking. Right now, the proposal includes less than half of the minimum required number of parking spots for onsite, and I'm concerned that that will overflow into Chesterbrook. Right now, we only have a handful of spots for the parents to pick up the kids, and we're entitled to those spots. We're picking up our kids until 6:30 PM. We only have a handful of spots for the parents because the staff are using the other spots. We have what we need. And the Bannerman's patrons are not likely to use valet for across the street, they're not likely to tip in the suburbs to pay for valet, they're going to use the Chesterbrook lot instead, and that's really not fair for us to not be able to pick up our kids. I've spoken with families who have children going to the daycare next to the current Bannerman's, and they have reported similar problems. They've reported problems with parking during high-profile events like concerts, which they have been planned on Friday and Saturday nights, or Friday nights then. They've reported also on those high-profile events, they've reported patrons smoking outside the doors to the daycare, and the patrons refuse to move when the parents ask them to. So there has already been some conflict, and we would expect more of that as the business grows, and we cannot expect this business to be the same size as it is. Right now, they're using their current parking lot, and then they will overflow into the parking lot by Walgreens, they'll overflow into the parking lot by Dominix, and in the current proposal, there is no place for overflow whatsoever. They're using the bare minimum with the parking spots across the street, which are, I think, valet, and so when they have these concerts, which they want to do on Friday nights, there's not any spot for it. I'm also concerned about the noise, because when they have a 7:00 PM concert planned on Friday, they're going to be doing sound checks and band practice during the day while the kids are napping, my child is napping in the infant classroom, and that's going to wake our kids up. It's also, again, going to interfere with the kids playing outside. Of course, I'm concerned about the health and safety of the kids. I'm concerned with people smoking outside, in particular, in close proximity, because in a beer garden, you can smoke, and so I'm concerned about the smoking right next to where the children play. So there are so many concerns, and I am strongly for economic development. I want this to happen in our town, but I want it to happen right. So I beg you to do it right, and that means, I don't see how it can be done right in this location. So I beg you to please do it right in a location where it will work for all involved, including the neighbors. Thank you.
Thanks. You know what we'll do is we will give those of you that have already spoken about Bannerman's location another opportunity at committee if you have something that you didn't think of, and the rest of you that want to speak will have you, give you an opportunity at committee, so it's all fresh in everybody's mind. Does anybody else want to address the board on anything other than that? Okay. Then we'll move along. Next item on our agenda is understanding committee reports, planning and zoning committee, Chairman Ranky, and I believe...
Yeah, Mr. President, I think at this time I will recuse myself as I have a business in the TIF district, and I will step out before we begin.
Thank you.
While trustee Camerer is stepping out, that is a requirement in the TIF Act. If someone has an interest in property in the TIF Act, they're disqualified from voting. Section 11-74.45 provides, in this instance, where the Joint Review Bar Board, which is comprised of a number of taxing bodies, a public member and a village member, that body, if they reject the plan, that it then requires a three-fifths vote of the corporate authorities. Corporate authorities include the president and the board of trustees, but in that three-fifths vote, you exclude members that are ineligible to vote because of conflicts of interest, which is the situation with trustee Camerer. So in this case, it would be three-fifths of six members, being the five trustees and the village president, so require four votes to pass each of the TIF ordinances, and under these faxes we have them.
Thank you.
So before we talk anymore about the TIF, I'll entertain a motion to approve item number one.
I'll second that. I'll make a motion that we approve number one, the ordinance approving the Village of Bartlett Downtown TIF redevelopment project area.
Second.
Moved by trustee Danny, seconded by trustee Aaron's. The clerk, please, is there any discussion?
Yes, I have something I'd like to say before we take a vote.
Do that under discussion.
It is now.
Yeah, we're open for discussion now.
No, no, discussion part.
Never mind.
Well, I've done a great deal of soul-searching about how to vote this evening. I've talked to business owners in the village, and I've listened to what they've said during our open meetings. The decision that we're making this evening will affect our village for 20-plus years, and it's a decision that none of us should take lightly. This evening, I passed out a few pamphlets to the trustees that I was, happened to acquire, and it talks about what we had in the TIF district before and what it looks like now. And I remember when I moved to Bartlett in 1976, driving down Main Street, and it wasn't a pleasant sight. I heard a lot of criticism about the last TIF, and I asked myself, are these naysayers right? Did the last TIF work? Was it perfect? Did it hit a home run? I guess we all can say it didn't, but at least we reached first base. And the downtown area has greatly improved. We can all say the downtown area is much better now because of that TIF. No more vacant industrial properties, Sethco fastener, Flex-Weld or environmental concern. I know we'll never have a downtown Naperville or St. Charles, and I don't think anyone believes that will happen, but we can't quit trying to improve what we have. These downtown business owners are crying for help, and I believe we have an obligation and a responsibility to help these people survive. They are struggling, and I sympathize with them. I had a business that suffered also, but I couldn't reach out to anyone. Yes, it was their choice to open a business, but isn't that the American way, try to improve the quality of life for you and your family? Now they had that opportunity. If someone were drowning, wouldn't you throw them a lifeline? That's what these business owners are asking for now. We need to believe they can survive, and tonight we have that opportunity to throw them a lifeline. And to breathe some life back into an area that we all should be so heavily committed to. I ask you not to turn your backs on these businesses. Don't let them drown. Give them something to look forward to. Give them hope. Do your job and fulfill your civic responsibilities and protect these existing and new and potential businesses. Regarding the other taxing bodies, which we've heard so much about, sharpen your pencil, just as this village board did with their last budget. You survived the last TIF, and you will survive this one. I'm sure you all have qualified people working to see that your budgets are balanced. Don't do this at the expense of downtown business. I respect the commission members that serve our village, and I understand we have developers interested in downtown, but will they come without a TIF? I don't know. I'm not a mind reader, but we must give this a chance. I remember Bartlett in 1976, and given a choice, I'll take what we have right now, and I know this wouldn't have happened without a TIF. I ask you, are you satisfied with the downtown area? Is this what you want 20 years from now? Or do you want to take a chance together to take, that we can make it better? Don't allow downtown to remain stagnant or dormant. It needs infusion to change. Please give this TIF a chance. Please give this TIF a chance. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Daney.
Anyone else have comments?
I would just make one. I made a lot of notes during the hearing, and I think one of the...I think the president of the fire department said it best, "It's not an easy decision." I think Trustee Daney pointed that out as well. It's a difficult time for all organizations, but as the gentleman said at the podium, this is one of the vehicles that we have as a village that provide us the ability to do these things, to improve areas that are running into some hard times. So the tally that I took while people were talking, it's 22 people at the hearing stood up and spoke. There were 15 positive comments and seven negative. And not that that means there aren't more negatives and more positives out there that decided not to speak, but it's important that we all understand that this is very near and dear to some of our longest-living businesses.
I too did an awful lot of soul-searching. I took copious notes like you did, and I went back over my notes and just sort of digested what everybody had said. And I agree with something that Mr. Perry said. He said, quote, "Small business is the heart and soul of our economy." That struck a chord with me, and it made me sort of conceptualize this whole TIF issue. I desperately want to do something that will help our small businesses in the downtown. I desperately want to do something to help every resident and every business in the village of Bartlett. I don't think our focus should be solely on the downtown. Clearly, those folks are having some trouble. A lot of people are, not to trivialize that. But I don't think that the proposed TIF is the answer to these problems. As a preliminary matter, this TIF comes way too soon after the expiration of the previous TIF. The map is virtually identical. So this begs the question that I've heard time and time again, is how will this TIF be different than the previous TIF? So for me to answer that question, in my mind and in the residents, the many residents who have asked me this question, I would have to rely on the plan. And I'm troubled by the lack of a comprehensive plan to address the many challenges of downtown. Now, we do have this older plan for the downtown, but what I feel we need is a radically new approach that does something more than simply put a Band-Aid on our downtown. We need a plan that reimagines downtown in a physically and economically feasible manner. One of the staff members during, I think it was the GRB meeting, might have been the public hearing, made mention that this is not a plan, really. It's just a way of financing. And like Mr. Perry's comment, the staff member's comment struck a chord with me because, well, we're talking about not a plan, but just throwing money at a problem, which government tends to do. People tend to do that, too, just throw money at a problem, and it's going to make it go away. I think that that's a fallacy, and I'm not going to support that notion. Further, the proposed TIF will divert money away from other taxing districts. I think Trustee Daney's statement that the other taxing districts need to sharpen their pencil, certainly there are some more than others, and we know who we're talking about. But sharpening that pencil and minding your business, that sounds relatively innocuous when we're talking about a larger taxing body like U-46, half-billion-dollar budget that is far more able to absorb what we are going to do to them. However, I would like to focus in on the districts like the Fire Protection District and the Library, smaller, more modest districts wherein their major source of revenue is property taxes. And our fellow units of local government have told us time and time again, the diverted funds will harm their ability to serve our residents. And rest assured, there's one thing that we can be certain of. Government always gets its money from the people. So those districts will get the money that they need to operate. So how will they do that? Well, they will shift the burden that would otherwise fall inside that TIF district to outside the TIF district. So in other words, we're all going to pay just a little bit more, depends on, you know, the taxing body, but we'll pay just a little bit more to support the TIF. Now, one of the most common and probably the most salient argument to me in favor of the TIF is that many people have stated that potential redevelopment will occur if the TIF passes. Now, as an aside, and as an attorney, I've represented governmental entities that have established TIFs, that have had TIFs and had to administer them. I've represented developers that have used TIF funds, sometimes small amounts, sometimes rather large amounts. And I do believe it is entirely possible to establish a public-private partnership to revitalize an area with TIF funds. I've seen it happen. I believe it. In the context of Bartlett again, I've heard many people say that we have this potential redevelopment if the TIF passes. At the TIF hearing back in June, I asked, encouraged anyone to provide me with the identity or the plans of these developers. I want to hear it. Even a whisper would have done. I haven't heard anything. No projects with any specificity. I haven't heard how any proposal would benefit the village. I haven't heard anything, even off the record, nothing. No one has said anything to me, just assurances that there are developers out there. I can't vote for a TIF based on promises or assurances. That's not my job. My job is to consider the facts that are presented, the things that I can look at and think about, and then make my vote. I'm not going to vote based on promises or assurances. One of the most interesting things about Bartlett politics is how many things we don't talk about publicly. It's a very interesting phenomenon, not unique to Bartlett, but we have an acute case of it here. There is a concerted effort to keep things quiet and not rock the boat. I understand that. You know, certainly it's designed to instill fear and control. But I do know an awful lot of business people in town through my civic activities, through my role as an attorney. I represent the Chamber of Commerce. And a lot of people will pull me aside and sort of whisper to me and say, "You know, Aaron, I think that this TIF thing is a bad idea, but I don't want to say anything publicly." So they say things like, "What about the businesses outside of the TIF? What about the residents themselves that are struggling to do things, and they could use a TIF?" In other words, where's my TIF? I mean, I had a relative...a very respected member of our business community say to me, "Aaron, where's my TIF?" And I couldn't answer them. I have no answer for that. I can't answer that. And, you know, just that's not a good answer to the silent majority that is out there. My hope for the TIF, and I did support it, you know, was to develop a game changer. And this isn't it. I don't see this as being a game changer. This TIF is not like Brewster Creek, such a comparison as tantamount to apples and oranges. I think that the TIF on 59 further south would have the potential for bringing a game changer. I think the Lake Street TIF, despite a lot of difficulties with it, we could probably make some headway there, too. That could be a game changer. But I don't see that this TIF is actually going to solve the issues that are strangling our businesses village-wide and in particular, the downtown. So a couple of those issues that I did ferret out in the comments by the wonderful residents that attended include things like property taxes. Let's make one thing very clear. The TIF will not reduce property taxes. It does not reduce your property taxes. That problem is going away, not going away. I think there was one gentleman who complained about his property taxes being $30,000 or $32,000 a year. The TIF isn't going to fix that. There is no way that we will be able to fix that as a village board. The Cook County sales tax, obviously that discourages commerce on the Cook County side of the village, and I think the village has to oppose the current proposal to yet again increase the sales tax and encourage reckless spending by the folks in Cook County. The downtown infrastructure or layout, however you wish to conceptualize it, a TIF of this size, approximately $17.5 million, is not going to change the infrastructure or the layout of the downtown. I wish it could. That downtown traffic study that we did several months ago was probably, what, two years now? Basically told us that the downtown is about as good as it's going to get. The traffic down there is just as good as it's going to get unless we realign, you know, Oak and Main, and that's going to cost millions and millions of dollars, and frankly, that's unachievable. So the TIF won't move the train. It won't move the roads. And, you know, frankly, and this, you know, goes back to me talking about things that people don't like to talk about, we've made some bad decisions, haven't we? We've made bad decisions about the split platform on the train. Hindsight's always 2020, but we did make that bad decision. But make no mistake, that bad decision is not a lack of planning. It's bad planning. It's poor planning. So we did create part of this problem, and we need to work to fix it. I also note that there is a number of redevelopment tools that might be available and viable for us. The creation of a downtown business development district based on a realistic yet comprehensive redevelopment plan, one that is the subject of intense public comment, intense review, a vision of rebranding of our downtown. The use of property tax abatements, which I understand is challenging, but we can do that. Sales tax rebates, creative redevelopment agreements. Let's work with developers instead of against them. We can issue bonds and obtain grants. I'll pray for that one, to pay for public improvements like sewers, roads, and bike paths. We can waive permit fees, and there are other possibilities. We can reform our zoning and other ordinances to ease burdens and facilitate redevelopment to encourage business owners to develop. However, I'm not going to lie to you. I don't think any one of these things is a cure-all. I think anybody that tries to tell you that this problem of business village-wide or the downtown, all of the challenges that those businesses face is going to be cured by a TIF is trying to sell you snake oil. That's all it is. It's charlatanism. Absolutely. The TIF is not going to fix all of these problems. We all have to work together to oppose increases in property tax and government spending. So yes, we have to continue to sharpen our pencil. We have to encourage the local taxing bodies to sharpen their pencils as well. We have to reach out to our wonderful Cook County Commissioner and Republican Party Chair to oppose the sales tax increase. I think we need to, going back to my earlier comments, I think we need to develop a viable plan for downtown with a reasonable chance for success. So none of this pie-in-the-sky stuff. We have to think about a downtown that is going to work for us and be realistic about it. Obviously, we have to shop locally if that's something that's...if we could do that, if we could buy a shirt in town. And then I think we need to challenge our staff to preserve and promote what we have. And at some point, I think we could perhaps consider a TIF again, but I think that in this circumstance, I'm going to vote no. So I know I was rather long-winded. I think I even outlasted you, Trustee Daney. So I'll...which is an achievement, probably one of the greatest of my career. So I will thank you for listening to me and promptly shut up.
Thank you, Trustee Ranky.
You're well done, Aaron.
I think that covered a lot of the bases that everybody has discussed and thought about on this board. Anybody else have any discussion?
I have something to follow up, but I don't have a prepared statement, and I can't better than... I agree with Trustee Daney and Trustee Ranky. My personal opinion is that we do need this TIF, but with what's going down in Springfield and the uncertainties of what is in the future right now, I don't think this is the year to do it. So maybe we should wait one year, two, but not now.
Anybody else? I would just make a comment. During the public hearing, one of the Fire Protection trustees called me out for essentially, and maybe accurately, it was certainly not intentional, but Trustee Langfelder made a comment that I was a little abrasive on a comment I made after his comments, and I have to apologize to him publicly. It wasn't intentional. So Trustee Langfelder, I apologize if I was abrasive or if it came across as being too bold or strong. So he's here tonight, and I just wanted to make that public. But I think that Trustee Ranky, Trustee Daney pointed out a lot of really good things that we've all discussed at length over and over and over again. So with that being said, if there's no other discussion?
I just wanted to say I was not in favor of this TIF from the beginning, simply because it covered an area that was already covered. I do want to say to you, Mr. Barry, President Barry, that the TIF would have very little effect on your budgeting in the next five to 10 years. It just would not, because we're not cutting out any income from you if there's no improvement in the equalized assessed valuation. The heartfelt speeches of Mr. Warden at the last meeting, Mr. Daney today, point out that Bartlett has...still has the, quote, "small-town flavor," and boy, I sure like that. And if we forget what this town was and what...and if we keep picking and picking and picking away at it, pretty soon it's going to become the Charlie Brown Christmas tree, unrecognizable from past years and undesirable. At this time, I would like to say that I will be voting yes for the TIF. However, there's a button there. I'm not sure this is the right time. I'm not sure we shouldn't, because we are...right now, in our budgeting, like you said, President Barry, we don't know what's going to happen with the state. And although this may not have a big effect on any TIF money that we take in, I think that I would rather play the wait-and-see game, knowing what the state...or not knowing what the state is going to go through. So in that light, I would probably be asking if we can postpone the TIF for some time.
Pretty good. Anybody else?
I had an eight-page speech prepared, but I decided not to do it.
There's no other discussion. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaronz?
No.
Cameron?
He abstained.
I'm sorry. Carbonaro?
No.
Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
No.
Ranky?
No.
Motion carries. Yeah, I don't have to vote. So the motion does not carry? Denied.
Motion failed.
Motion failed. And I would move on to...
I'll entertain a motion then to approve item number two, the ordinance designating the village of Bartlett Downtown TIF redevelopment project area.
I'll make a motion for the ordinance designating the village of Bartlett Downtown TIF redevelopment project area.
I'll second it. Moved by Trustee Daney, seconded by Trustee Hopkins. Is there any discussion on that?
Yes, I'm going to read my speech again.
Oh, God.
And then Aaron will follow.
Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaronz?
No.
Carbonaro?
No.
Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
No.
Ranky?
No.
That motion fails.
And finally, ordinance...I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance adopting the tax increment financing for the village of Bartlett in connection with the designation of the Downtown TIF redevelopment project area.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Daney, seconded by Trustee Carbonaro. Will the clerk please call...is there any discussion on this part? The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Aaronz?
No.
Carbonaro?
No.
Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
No.
Ranky?
No.
That motion fails.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's all we have on planning and zoning this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. Next item on our agenda is under Building Committee. We'll allow Trustee Cameron to join us again unless you're getting comfortable over there. Once again, Building Committee Chairman Hopkins.
There's nothing to report tonight, President Wallace.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins. Next item on our agenda is under Finance Involved Committee Chairman Daney.
Mr. President, we have no reports this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Daney. Next item on our agenda is under the License and Ordinance Committee Chairman Aaronz.
All of our items are covered under the Consent Agenda, with the exception of item one, which was asked to be not included. So item number one is the executive session minutes review. All of our executive session minutes are required to be held, released, or approved after a certain amount of time. So what we have here is several, some of them are years' worth of executive session minutes. And in executive session, those are the privilege of the board, the president, and any staff members that it may affect. So these are the minutes from those meetings. If you want to say anything else, Aaron, if you wanted to take it off, the consent agenda, perhaps you'd like to enumerate on that now. enumerate on that now.
I have a, a couple of changes that I'd like to make. Brian, since these minutes haven't been approved for release, is that something that we need to do in executive session?
You can. It depends how much detail you need to talk about in open session. We could add it at the end, delay it now. We're going in unfortunately after the, the way it's scheduled, after the committee of the whole meeting, but there's no reason we couldn't just reconvene the meeting after that and add this item to your already scheduled executive session.
Okay.
Because otherwise, it's too hard to talk in public.
Right. I have some detailed changes. So I think perhaps we should discuss this in executive session.
All right. So if I get that straight, we will be, is the proper table in this?
Yeah.
We'll table this until...
Why don't we just table it until later this evening, probably?
Post-executive session for either approval or...
Okay, there being no other business?
So there should be a motion to table, a second, and then we'll call on that.
I move to table the consideration of the executive session minutes review.
Moved by trustee Ranky, seconded by trustee Ahrens to table the discussion on executive session minutes until post-executive session. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Ahrens?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
That motion carries.
I'm done.
Thank you, Chairman Ahrens. Next on our agenda, agenda this evening is police and health committee chairman Carbonaro.
Thank you, Mr. President. No, no report tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Carbonaro. Next item on our agenda is under public works committee chairman Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too have nothing to report for public works.
Chairman Cameron, brings us down to new businesses. At this point, is there any new business that could, 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 or that you'd like to discuss?
I'm serious about what I said in the context of the TIFF. I think there's other things we can do, and I think we should start looking at that. I know the RTA grant process is going to start to study, but we could do things. I don't think that a, a vote no on the TIFF should mean that our efforts to help all the businesses, and in particular the downtown, should end our efforts at all.
Well said. Anything else? Hearing none. At this point, is there any additional questions? Any board member may have?
I have a question for staff. Could we add on committee, talk about our water issue? A couple of residents have mentioned to me that we have not talked about it in a while. I was wondering if we could add that and just get an update on kind of what's going on with it?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anything else? So everybody in the staff know, or the boardroom knows, we'll be going in directly into a committee of the whole meeting following the adjournment of this meeting. And then we will have a short recess in between the committee of the whole, between that and the executive session, and then after the executive session, we'll reconvene and either pass or fail the last thing that we just called.
Second.
Moved by trustee Ahrens, seconded by trustee Daney. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Ahrens?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.